That are from June to November, from April.
Uh, what's that day?
The first Saturday in April. We would be asking to use it from, I don't have my phone.
The sixth?
It's the sixth. April sixth until the end of November. Um, last year we was a little late, so we didn't bring flag football over with us. We just brought contact football over with us. So this year, um, we're trying to bring spring football, you know, to Pitt County now. Um, it's not going to be flag football anymore, seven on seven football, which is, uh, very common now. So flag football's still big, but our athletes want to throw the ball, of course, because everybody's stoneball. So now we gotta go with the times and everything like that. So that's what we're trying to do. So that's what we're trying to bring here. And also on top of that, I am asking if you guys do approve us to use the field again, if we can come to agreement for multi-years so that we're able to plan for the following year, our start dates and things like that, so that we can get the ball rolling, get our sponsors in, you know, get our volunteers sand on and things like that. Questions?
April sixth, that's the first Saturday?
Yes.
And that would be every Saturday until?
Uh, we can, we can do Sunday, we could jump to Sundays and everything like that if we need to do Sundays. It don't have to be a Saturday.
What hours would it be that you're, you'd be down on the field?
Uh, I'm thinking we would start probably nine o'clock in the morning, just to open concession stands and things like that. And then we could probably be in and out here with seven on seven. It's so much different than contact football.
I see you're gonna do that in April because, well, I guess well on the weekends. I have to say the kids are still at school.
Yes, we'll, we'll, so we'll, um, only do it on Saturdays. That's the only day that's needed.
There will be, uh, no practice during the week?
There's, there's no practice time needed with, uh, in the spring. Contact football is a lot different, you know, it, it's so much that goes into all of that because, you know, they're bashing heads. So you need a lot of time to work with that. But for seven on seven, it's literally like playing in the street as a kid. You know, you get playing, it's just, you know, seven on seven. So everyone has one uniforms, but it's one hand touch and everything like that. So it's not a big deal. We could probably do it in five hours. So if we started at nine, uh, maybe five o'clock, just so that we have.
No, Mike, you said five hours.
I know, but I started, I started thinking about setup, breakdown, cleanup. We wanna make sure we have enough time to do that. I don't wanna say, I don't wanna say, you know, nine to two o'clock and then we're supposed to be off the field and we're still walking around grabbing things, cleaning up things like that. And then it's like, you were supposed to be done. I like to overshoot the mark that way that if we're done two hours early, we just leave.
Yeah, yeah.
There's no reason to hang around.
Why would you want the field for contact football?
Uh, the days for contact football?
When would you start that?
Contact football practices will start after June first. So June first will be our last day. So that's the day, um, we also held that event here. That's called Kings Day. We held that event here last year. We had the bounce houses out here. We had pony rats going on. We have, uh, flag football going on down here. We had, uh, the concession going with food and everything like that. So that's like the end of our spree s- spring season day.
And how many days a week would that be?
Uh, contact football is four days.
And what days would those be?
Uh, Tuesday through Friday. Saturday is game day. So I guess you could count it as that.
Are all your games on Saturday with contact?
All the games are on Saturdays, but if we have to move to a Sunday, we just move it to a Sunday. We let the league know we gotta do games on Sunday. So there's never an issue, never a reason to conflict with anything else that's going on. Um, last year the fair was here.
Yeah.
We just told the league the fair's here. We can't use the field at all. The league needs to work that out and make our schedule to where, um, I think it ended up being like two weeks in a row we was on the road. No kidding. It's football. Used to play on the road. I mean, you gotta be on the road regardless. So.
How many home games do you have?
Um, last year we had five. We didn't make the, um, our teams wasn't high seeds in the playoffs, so we didn't host no playoff games. Hopefully that changes. Hopefully we're, you know, we're, we're better.
That the minimum of home games you play on a Saturday would be five?
Five. Would be the minimum.
And what's your total schedule coming in games?
Ten. Ten games regular season. Hopefully, that's always the hope. Hopefully ten games regular season and hopefully three games postseason, including the championship, which wouldn't need to be played here because they always wanna go in front of it. So we wouldn't have to worry about grass.
And how many youths from Pitt County actually play on your team?
Uh, I don't have the exact number with me. I can tell you, uh, we literally had probably every possible kid in Pitt County that we could get to play football, play football. We have, um, a lot of Pitt County kids on our team. We got kids that actually didn't even wanna play football at all, didn't even like it. Ended up playing and loving it and bugging us about what we're going next. So, um.
Alright, so then I'm understanding, starting April sixth is when you would start to host training. That would fall under Tuesday through Fridays?
No.
No, no, that's, that's only playing football. That's just Saturdays.
Oh, that's, okay, I.
No, no, that's why you asked. That's okay. I'm, I'm with you.
Okay, so the flag footballs will be on Saturdays. There's no training for that, no other use for that period of time?
Yep. We'll figure it out on Saturdays.
And then when does the start of the contact start again?
June first.
Okay, I have that. Okay.
After June first, so the following week after that, we will start, um, so June first, I guess it will technically still be like spring. But that's the end, end of spring celebration day. So.
So that's gonna be the King's Day?
So that's, yes.
So you're talking June?
I'm listening, see?
June fourth would be that Tuesday?
Uh, I don't, I don't know if we would do it immediately that day after coaches be needing a break. I mean, some of y'all know how it goes. Coaches be needing a break, so we try to, we try to give them a break before we start conditioning for contact football. Because if you play sports, you know, every sport has different conditioning. You could think you're in a shape for this sport till you start playing it and you're like, I'm not in shape at all.
How many teams are in your league?
Uh, six.
Six? Are they all basically Allegheny County, Westmoreland County?
Yes. Yes. Oh, no. Last year we, yeah, one Ohio team, young stuff. But they're not gonna be in our league anymore. So drop a team, we might add a few teams. We'll see if teams come over from other leagues. That process is still going on right now. So I don't know exactly what teams will be there. Um, last year, soon as we got our schedule, I gave Mike our schedule, made sure that he had it, so that we can work out any issues and everything like that. Also, I talked to Chief to make sure he knows how many people to expect with weekends and things like that. So that we can work through all those logistical things that Mike goes on.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I, I heard you correctly.
Yes ma'am.
You said that if, we said that we could only do Saturdays, they will, the league will work with you and only do Saturdays.
Yes.
And that is for both the flag and the contact?
Yes. The, 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 uh.
I'm just making it forever correct.
The thing with the flag, so it's five and six will be flag. Seven on seven will be the older ages. So it will be, um, seven to fourteen will be set, it's called seven on seven. And that's what they'll do. And this is the in-house thing. That's an in-house thing. So we don't, we don't have a league, we don't have a league oversight for that. So we can really do what we need to do in the spring as far as scheduling, things like that. And our board have already had conversations, actually, we're gonna talk tonight. We have already had conversations about the potential of maybe needing to play on Sundays. So it's already known, our league known from last year that we might have to play on Sundays. It's a, it's a normal thing that, you know, some people use turf fields. So it's a normal thing that a team plays on a Sunday. It's not a, it's not a big deal.
The reason they, they wanna make sure is there's a softball team that may.
Yes.
A softball team.
Yes. Yes. We don't, we don't wanna collab with them at all.
Right, that's why I was trying to clarify.
Last year, actually, one day we was practicing and, uh, we had opened a concession stand and it was so happy.
Yeah, I think, I haven't heard from them yet, but I think the women's team, just because traditionally they've always had Friday nights. So. They've, they've been playing Friday nights for years, so we don't wanna do that.
And the Sunday, if there was a Sunday league to come in, they would be on Sunday, so that doesn't interfere with the schedule. So the field would be busy?
We just come through our thing, make sure we clean up and we, it's how we challenge it. You know, we try, we try our best. Last year there was a few times where stuff was left. Um, we noticed that last year, once we started, that, you know, the basketball court got a little more active. You know, people started coming down, hanging around, watching it. And, you know, so we try our best. And then, um, you know, you notice once all the cars pull off or something like that, there's all this trash that blew up under the cars or something like that. So then we try to, you know, do the best we can. So that's why last year we also asked for a bunch of trash cans, so that we can make sure. Because, um, if there's no trash can to throw it in, you know somebody's just gonna throw it on the ground if there's no trash can. So we try to rectify that by having a bunch of trash cans so they could throw it away.
Alright, and we talked about a deposit per game. If there was no, if the borough didn't have to clean the field or the cops weren't called and there was no incidents, there, there would be no deposit. But we have talked about a deposit per game. As long as the field is taken care of, cleaned up, and there, the cops aren't called, okay? It won't cost you nothing.
This will apply across the board. This actually we just discussed. I don't know if we really should be.
And if we were there yet.
If, if we were quite there yet to announce anything, we're, we're talking, but it'll be across the board for all sports that come into town that want to run our field. And, um, we still haven't made a decision. We're still tossing it in. But you could be prepared for a security deposit per each, a check per each game. And if everything is as is, it will be retained and that would apply to the women's softball team, the baseball, whatever, every, any.
You get your two hundred and then if everything's, well, you get your two hundred back.
You get, you get your check right back. But if.
For each game date.
Each, each game date, yes.
So there would need to be a check submitted each.
We, we, it's not even, it's not even that far off.
It's unfair with that since stuff.
Well, because we're, we're a youth organization, so as people may know, we, we don't have money, money floating around and even like our seven on seven, it's thirty-five dollars. So and, uh, contact football last year was twenty-five dollars. Just let, so we're not, we're not in it to, you know, as kids. We're not in it to make any kind of money or hold any bank account with a, with a nice amount in it to carry over or anything like that. We don't do anything like that. So something like that, we would need to, you know.
You'd have ample amount of time ahead of time, yes. This, this is in the very, very beginning stages. There's not even really a decision made on that. It was just a, a kind of a heads up.
It's good to kind of.
And it does come up.
It's good to kind of know.
Yeah, yeah, just, just a.
I mean, if you have a pause where you, you put the money down, everything met satisfaction, field was cleaned up and everything, no damage, nothing like that.
You'd get it back.
You would get it right back.
It, it's essentially like a holding fee.
Yeah. I, I was just asking for each, each week I would need to come down and.
We, we aren't even that far enough. I couldn't even answer that.
Yeah, we have, it just came up. It just came up.
You would be notified ahead of time.
Okay.
And, and everybody else that would have a contractor, a rental contractor, the field would be notified ahead of time.
Okay.
Anything else from Council?
I can answer anything.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you. I'm Sean, the owner.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's our finances person.
Alright.
So when we're talking about money.
She was listening.
Well, that's all right, man. My thought was we could get the, if we needed to, the two hundred dollar check and then would you guys keep it? Couldn't you keep it for each week? Like if it rolled out as opposed to.
Yeah, like something, like a holding, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would just hold it in the safe and then when everything was done, we would just return it back.
And then you could rip it up and call it in.
Okay, or we could leave it for each week as opposed to like switching on.
Yeah, yeah.
That would be my thought.
And it's not, yeah, like I said, it's not in the, the final stages or anything. It's just something in discussion.
Makes sense.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Any issues? No issues?
Thank you, sir.
Have a good night.
Alright, moving on. Mayor Betsy Stebicke.
Pitt County Police worked a hundred and ninety-nine calls, uh, in the month of January. Um, we didn't, uh, we got eighty-three dollars from an magistrate, not much. Well, that was bumbling, sorry. And we got two hundred and seventy-nine dollars, uh, from, uh, Harmet Hurst. A hundred and fourteen dollars in county fines and no quality of my tickets were paid. Also, we do have a pad to register dogs. I'm saying this more for the listening audience. We encourage you to, uh, register your dog with the county, um, and help to their lost room. And we find them, they have a tag, unless they've been chipped. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Personnel, Dominic.
I would just like to let everyone aware that the Public Works Employee Contract expires this December, December two thousand twenty-four. And the Teamsters have asked if we would, if we would like to negotiate early. And that's all the business I have, Mr. President.
Alrighty.
I just wanna add, if anybody wants to be on, uh, negotiating committee, uh, I think you're Dominic or myself now.
Moving on to Streets, George Toss.
Yes, uh, it's time discussion on Taylor Avenue Bridge speed calculation. Well, we put out the bids to do Taylor Avenue and they weren't pretty. A low bid was eight hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars and thirty cents. The rest, I'm gonna top a million dollars. So it's gonna be expensive to do Taylor Avenue. Okay.
Well, what? I wanna, I wanna bring something up. I had a meeting today with, uh, the Department of Environmental Protection and the Department of General Services to discuss releasing the state capital money to us. So, uh, we have approval. We just have to work out the details. Uh, they, they call it a utility agreement. It'll be between us and the Commonwealth PA. Um, basically, they will, once they have the cost of the project, they will deposit that money into one of our bank accounts. Or we are gonna have to create a new bank, open a new bank account because that's a non-interest bearing account. And all the money has to be run through there to pay for the, pay for the bridge. So, um, that was what we did use today to get, we also still have the two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar grant to pay for anything that, that is our responsibility. Because we do have to, it looks like we're gonna have to move some utility lines and there's some other work involved in the bridge. If any more detail on it, you can ask, uh, Dan can add to it if he needs to.
So, uh, Mike, is that a grant?
It is not a grant. So, so the flood control project is to be paid for by the state, the majority of. So they've had this money sitting there because the project's never been, you know.
Okay, so they're gonna ask a portion of that.
So because, yeah, because we're doing this bridge and we, we use the state's plans for the bridge, they are going to release that amount, that portion of money for that bridge to us. And instead of them writing the checks, we'll give us, so if we say it's gonna cost eight hundred eighty-four thousand dollars, they'll give us the eight hundred eighty-four, put it in the bank. And then we write the checks out of that and then when the project's all done, we'll do a final accounting. If we go over, we may have to pay. If we go under, of course, we'll have to give the money back.
So the two seventy-nine that we have budgeted?
Two seventy-nine is a grant and we've never even seen it. We just have grant approval that we can use for that particular project. So we can, um, there's, there's what's called sponsor adjustments that we have to pay for. So anything that's part of that bridge that we may have to pay for, we'll have to use for that. We've already put money out for the moving of the pole line out on Wall Avenue. We can reimburse, get reimbursed using that grant for that, hopefully. So.
All good news there.
Yeah.
Yep. And here's what that, you gotta install a temporary bridge at Taylor Avenue. Motion to approve a purchase of a fourteen foot.
That was supposed to be a discussion.
We gotta move back. We gotta discuss the bridge.
About the bridge, temporary bridge. Can you give me a little more detail on the temporary bridge and why we need it?
So the bridge is to serve two purposes, basically. As you know, that bridge is inspected under the Pendott Bridge Inspection Program. Well, over the last few years, obviously, the upstream and downstream side ends of the bridges had to be shut off because, or closed off because of deterioration of the, uh, substructure and underneath the bridge deck. Um, that deterioration has started to accelerate. So while we got this project in motion, that, that, um, that's, that's suffice to show Pendott that the borough was moving on to try to rectify the situation. However, Pendott's feeling, when we had a meeting with them, was is that the, the back wall on the upstream side, um, may not last very much longer because it's deteriorating very rapidly. So one of the reasons for this, it's, um, temporary bridge is to make, make sure that we maintain access to residents, um, on Taylor. The other is that we let the, if the contractors that bid the project, we let them know that that bridge was gonna go in because basically if, if that bridge wasn't there, they were gonna have to build part of, half the structure, tear everything down again and build the other half of the structure. So with that temporary bridge, bridge being in place, we can maintain access to the residents. Plus, they can just build the whole structure all at one time. Or these prices that were really high would have been higher because they would have to, to come, you know, do half the work and then tear everything back up and do the other half. So right now, that bridge will keep the residents, um, keep access to the residents and a lot of the contractors just to go ahead and, and build the structure without that interruption.
And if I'm not mistaken, we, we, we can rent that bridge, utilize it for the project and then.
Yes. Jim, Jim already talked.
Is there a safe place to put that in off the Wall Avenue?
Um, I met with Jim out there probably about a month ago now. Um, right upstream from the structure, um, right upstream from where the, um, if you're looking across the bridge to Taylor Avenue, the, the wing wall on the far side is in really bad shape. So we were gonna put it up above that. The plan was is to stretch it on the Taylor Avenue side all the way over to Wall Avenue East and basically dig out a little corner of the road to, so that the bridge would be flush mounted. And then bring it over, the road is a little bit, the, um, the edge of the road there is a little bit lower, um, where the grass is. So we can transition straight into the road from there. Um, it's gonna be at a skew, so we'll probably have to put like a, um, probably a left out or left only on the, on the out, just because to try to make that right turn to go back up towards Monroeville. Cars will be pulling out into the, the other lane. So we'll probably have to make a left turn.
Be accessible to emergency vehicles?
Yes. And that way, it's straight. It'd be very similar to the ones that go the way out. Yes.
Would it be advised to put a stop sign there too at the br- bridge so that people don't just zip off the bridge on the Wall Avenue?
Yes, and whenever we go into construction, we have it in, um, their bid. Um, if you notice, there's item twenty's traffic control. Um, they're gonna have to tile that in together because they're looking at potentially closing down the one lane. So I'm thinking as a minimum, they probably might have to put in a temporary traffic signal or something in there. That would probably be the safest thing because that being over a hundred foot, that's probably a little dangerous to just have stop signs on either, on either end. Um, the contractors I talked to, that's why, well, actually, our plan she, I issued, um, shows a temporary, you know, says they should anticipate putting a temporary traffic signal. And the way I'd envision it is, is that there would be two separate heads. One for the, the southbound lane of, um, Wall and then one for the cars coming across the, the bridge.
And the other thing too is, uh, we don't know, you know, when they do their next inspection, they may say this bridge isn't gonna last. We need to shut it down today.
Yeah.
So, um, I'd like to have Jim start working on it and get, get the, uh, everything in motion to get the bridge installed.
Yeah.
Yes.
I think once that temporary bridge is put in, that we can basically go ahead with the project whenever we choose to do so, correct?
Yes. Um, there is just, and, and obviously today, the, the financing is really good news, but there is a lag time on this, on that structure. So I've been told that we probably, if they, we gave them go ahead to order that structure, we probably wouldn't get it until mid to late summer sometime.
Oh, jeez.
Oh, my.
Not the, not the temporary bridge.
No, not the temporary bridge, I'm sorry. The temporary one is relatively quick. But the box.
If we can, if we could just do a motion to, to authorize the, the start installation of the temporary bridge.
We can do that. Motion is very installation of a temporary bridge.
Second.
Motion made second. Any questions? I do have one. Do we have a price on the temporary bridge yet?
The first price we got was twenty-eight hundred a month.
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Anything else on Taylor Street?
No.
Alright, George, moving on.
I think a motion approved a purchase of a fourteen foot utility trailer from Samos Trailer and Snowy Equipment for five thousand seventy-five dollars. Cost to the borough is one thousand dollars. Just to replace the trailer stolen from Sugar Camp.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the purchase of the utility trailer from Smouse for five thousand seventy-five dollars. Cost to the borough is a thousand dollars. Any questions?
Do we know who stole the trailer from Sugar Camp?
We do not, unfortunately.
Are we gonna lock Sugar Camp up at night?
The trailer's not gonna be out there anymore. Um, and we have a, um, we have a trailer lock and a, Jim attached the chain to the Public Works Building from when the trailer's been parked outside. It'll be locked up there. But, um, yeah, we can still continue to lock Sugar Camp, the gate at Sugar Camp.
Any other questions?
That trailer was in pretty bad shape when that happened.
It was in, it was in very bad shape. So this is actually good for us because we needed to replace the trailer and we're gonna try to do it next year, so.
Save us disposal fees?
Alright, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That it, George?
That's it, Mr. President.
Alright, Parks and Rec, Lisa Podrowski.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the use of, well, we're gonna hold off on that. Um, there is a motion on here to approve the football field use for the Kings. However, I would like to get in contact with, um, the softball teams just to make sure the schedule works out smoothly before we continue with the, um, motion to reduce the fee to rent the park building for the Gateway Hockey Team's season banquet. They're looking at April twelfth, twenty-seventh, and May fifth as possible dates.
Second.
So just, so they asked to have either reduce their weight?
I, I would put the weight, can we choose? Like who, can we vote on waiving or reducing?
All in favor of waiving, all in favor of reducing?
Every other team that has, has used it for, they've always weighed it. They just asked for a reduced rate, so I wanted you guys to have the, the decision to either reduce or the weight.
How many Gateway groups use that building? Do you have any idea? Do we do this a lot, is my question?
No, Cleveland Stewart used it a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
For the dance and then, uh, and then other hockey teams asked and I don't recall anybody else.
Did, did Gateway sponsor them?
It's a gateway, it's gateway club.
No, it's their, it's their hockey team that's bought it.
Yeah, it's their actual team.
They've been sponsored for a while.
Okay, let's get back on track. A motion to.
Waive.
Waive the fee to, for the park building to the Gateway Hockey Team's season banquet.
Alright, the motion is to waive the fee.
Second.
Seconded by Deb. And any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Do we know if those dates are available? I'm sorry, I probably should have asked that.
No, they are. That's the three dates that they were open that we gave them.
Okay, okay, perfect. Um, okay, and I wanted to make a general announcement. Um, we'd like to reform the, uh, the Park and Rec Committee and we're looking for volunteers, um, to meet together and evening to discuss. Um, I have not picked a date for that yet, but if anybody is interested in, they would like to contact me to let me know when they are free, I would be happy to. just to let me know when they are free, I would be happy to hear from you. And that's all.
Alrighty.
Thank you.
Finance and Economic Development, Bill Kornoff.
Motion to pay bills as presented.
Second?
Motion made and seconded to pay the bills as presented, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed.
Motion to adopt a two-year wage freeze on borough employees, except what we are currently under contract.